I am going to go ahead and call the meetings to order. First of all, this call is for moment's silence. Thank you, and let me make the statement about our meeting tonight. We're meeting under an executive order. Number sixteen. That is through electronic means, meeting is necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare in light of COVID-19. And that any board meeting scheduled during the effective date of the executive order would be held electronically. We also practicing social distancing. I would also like to thank JEA and West Tennessee for streaming our meeting. Those are two of the public notice conclusions that we must have. That's part of the executive order. With that, next I want to welcome our new board member, Carol Carter, S T from the Crite.
Thank you.
First board meeting. And then I want to thank Ray and his administration and all the teams that have worked throughout the district during this crisis. And the teams have worked during the past few weeks with food distribution to our children. And have made adjustments weekly to ensure that all the children that need food are reached. I appreciate that, and the entire board appreciates that. The other thing I want to do is thank the administrators and teachers who have worked tirelessly getting material and package to students for their continued learning. I know it's been a task, and one of the highlights of that, that I've got a lot of calls and a lot of comments about, JCT and Isaac Lane actually had a parade with forty-plus cars through some of their neighborhoods, telling the kids how they missed them, how they cared for them, and also reinforce the fact that they had an opportunity to get material, whether electronically or manually, to make sure that all of our kids are covered. And I appreciate that more than those staffs and teachers and administrators know the efforts that they put through this time, which is uncharted waters. With that, on our agenda, and each of you should have copies of the agenda and all of the attachments with you since we were meeting electronically. First of all, we have our Jackson Master County School Financial Services Department budget amendments, monthly financial statements, and quarterly analysis, Holly Killer.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Yes.
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 Gotcha. And we have six budget amendments to consider this month. Our three of which are in the general purpose fund. Item number one, thirty-five thousand, four hundred ninety dollars. This is insurance recovery. Funds received for storm damage to buildings and technology infrastructure at East Elementary and Liberty High School. Item number two, sixty-six thousand, nine hundred forty-four dollars. The voluntary pre-K grant. Funds being transferred within the grant to cover year-end projections and salaries and benefits. Item number ten thousand, seven hundred ten dollars. Coordinated school health grant. Funds are being transferred within the grant to cover year-end expenditures. Item number four is in the federal programs fund. The Perkins basic grant. Due to the social distancing guidelines related to COVID-19, funds previously budgeted for in-service and staff development are being transferred to the vocational instructional equipment account for technology purchases. Five and six are in the education capital fund. Item five is one thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars. Insurance recovery. Funds received for damages to an awning at Parkview Learning Center. And item number six, two million, five hundred twenty-eight thousand, five hundred ninety-five dollars. This amendment will appropriate fund balance to use towards the projects. An intercom system at Northside High School for sixty-three thousand, nine hundred five dollars. And a roof and HVA system at Alexander Elementary, two million, five hundred twenty-eight thousand, five hundred ninety-five dollars. Anyone have any questions?
Holly, I do. There was some damage to Southside High School. And I think it was last month, but it would be on the next month, would it? Concerning any amendments and insurance recovery concerning that particular property?
Correct. If we receive money before the next meeting, we'll push it through by budget amendment.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions concerning the amendments? Okay, Holly.
Okay, the general purpose financial statement has been posted. Shows expenditure at the end of March coming in at two point four million dollars ahead of last year. As of the end of March, seventy point eight million dollars had been spent with an additional two point two million dollars in outstanding encumbrances. This is sixty-seven point four percent of the total budget and is right in line with expenditures at the same time last year. Year-to-date revenues from February totaled sixty-seven point nine million dollars. March revenues have yet to be posted. The preliminary year-end estimates are included on the financial statement and show expenditures coming in at ninety-five point four percent for the year, which is down from ninety-six point seven percent shown last month. The decline in expenditure projections is mostly due to school funding session. As now, our revenue estimates on the report for the year include county taxes coming in as budgeted at the maintenance of effort level of funding. State funding for fiscal year twenty is not expected to be impacted by the current budget. With revenues and expenditure estimates, the district would be using about three hundred thousand dollars of fund balance, leaving approximately thirteen point five million dollars on hand at year end. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Next, we have Karen Bill, Master County with the Finance Director's Monthly Report.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you.
Great. You should have been provided the one forty-one fund through February, as Holly said. Of course, February always looks really good because that's when the large portion of our property tax and other taxes come in, so revenue is ahead of expenditures on that for your general purpose school fund. One of the things that we have been monitoring very closely is how that we will be impacted on the revenues. One of the things that funds our local purpose fund, which is also what we use for the maintenance of effort, is business tax. Business tax has been pushed out to be paid from April fifteenth to June fifteenth. And there's discussions of possibly delaying that even more, which will definitely have an impact on the local purpose fund that we use for the maintenance of effort. We also found out from Washington, due to the forbearances on mortgages, property taxes will be delayed this year for as much as six months or later. We're waiting to get the final analysis on that. So again, possibly not a loss in revenue, but definitely a push out. So many of the state revenues that we receive are definitely going to be impacted by this. I know many of our department heads have asked if we knew, know exactly how much. The state stays two months behind on their revenues. So the March revenues will not be known until May. So we really don't know exactly what the impact is going to be. I guess you could say the Finance Director's report that was provided to you was the calm before the storm because we looked really good with sales tax and with property tax, but of course, all of this. And so we are working very closely to keep Holly and her staff informed. The budget hearings have been pushed out. They were scheduled to be next week. We've pushed those out until May the second through the seventh, hoping that perhaps we'll be able to meet in person. Our commissioner, who's the budget chairman, asked those to be pushed out at that time. But had a meeting with EMA this afternoon. We are working with and we're working with the school system on expenditures related to COVID that we can submit to the state, TMA and FEMA for some possible reimbursements. Again, just beginning on the details of that, but be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Karen, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. How much of an impact do you think it would have on our sales tax? Do you think it would be drastically reduced or to the point that we may need additional funding from the county commissioners to offset any monies that we fall short in? Or do you have any general idea at this point?
It's really hard to say at this point. Again, many of you know that most of the nonessential businesses have been shut down for at least two weeks or longer. Of course, our restaurants have definitely been impacted. Again, you know, sales tax for the county, there are not as many restaurants in the county as there are within the city limits. But again, sales taxes pay proportionally to both. And so we know that's going to have a huge impact. We just don't know at this time how much. We've also talked about if we have to have additional revenues, where would those come from? And of course, you know, with the county, basically additional funding comes from property taxes. But again, it's too early really to know. We know that we'll be impacted in FY twenty for the last three months of the fiscal year and that this will even carry over into fiscal year twenty-one. Hopefully by next month, we'll have a better handle and I can give you a better answer on that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Karen? Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
Next up, our April agenda review. Any questions, inputs, concern concerning the agenda that we have already, of course? If not, we'll go right into the public-private partnership update. Now Superintendent Ray Washington will do that for us.
Okay. So the public-private did close, everyone. It closed about a week ago, at the end of, the week before last. And there'll be a press release eventually, but right now, just wasn't the time with all the COVID stuff going on that we're going to put that out. It'd be a joint press release with the city, county, and University of Memphis. There, you'll see some activity at JCM and at Madison Site Work, starting at Madison, and interior work starting at JCM, starting this week. I haven't had a chance to go by either place yet, but I know those things are scheduled to start to occur. So as far as public-private, the paperwork side of it's done, which was a mountain of paperwork. And now it's just time to deal with the business.
What the update on projects of school closing?
Sure. So school closure. Of course, you know, we're out through April twenty-fourth, per the governor, and we're waiting for him to set guidance for the rest of the year. I understand that he's going to do that within the next week or two. There's a meeting of the State Department, State Board of Education, I'm sorry, on April ninth. Let's go outline some guidance about graduation and some of the other academic things that we're facing, given way this has unfolded over the last few weeks. And then the legislature will also be involved in some of the decisions. So the actual Department of Education does not make these decisions. They have to be done by the governor, the legislature, and then for recommendations of the State Board of Education. So there's a few people in between us and actual dates and times for things to occur. We just keep doing what we're supposed to do every day, supporting our students with educational materials and distribution of meals as far as the COVID-19 crisis is going on right now. But school projects this, this summer. So we'll start on those once we determine when school is going to be over with. We have the Nova Roof Project, we have the Arlington Roof Project. As Holly mentioned, we had the roof and HVAC at Alexander School. We have roof project at Liberty also, and the Northside North Building. Those are the five major projects, well, I say major. Then we have the gyms at West Bemis and JCT. Those are currently middle schools. It was built as elementary schools. As everyone knows, at some point it became middle schools, but we didn't provide adequate locker rooms for physical education or athletics for those facilities. So those are some other projects that are happening, happening this summer. Now, if you drive by, excuse me, if you drive by Andrew Jackson, you'll see the dome there that's been kind of an eyesore to me for many years, being redone. We're pressure washing it and we'll paint it to give it a better aesthetic look. It wasn't leaking, but we're going to make sure it's secure around all the edges so we don't get any leaks, and we're going to try to make sure we make that look a whole lot better. Same thing is going on at Parkview Learning Center. Rain has kind of delayed us, but we're looking to paint that building and fill all those cracks that's all around that building, right there on East Chester. So along with all these repairs, we're trying to get ahead of a few things at some schools that we can get ahead of before they get even worse. And so we just continue to work. Alan is organizing this and his crew is maintenance crew. They're working throughout this process, along with the bus garage. They have days on and off that they're working to take care of our buses. So we're doing a lot of catch-up with many things while we are out of the buildings. Sure. So yeah, all you have a list of all the repairs that have been done over the last several years and ones we plan to do. So as you can see, we're giving all schools attention. And some over time, just like you'll see a lot of money in Northside and Southside, some have needed more attention than others immediately. And we continue to work and catch-up on all of these things that need to be taken care of. So if you look through, every school has been impacted, and we'll continue to make sure that we take care of all the priorities as they arise and make sure that we give equity to everybody involved. But it's just some schools were in pretty rough shape three years ago and we're working to get all that caught up. And then, of course, things arise throughout the year. So you know, some of this stuff, like intercom she mentioned, at Liberty in the east, things going to occur out of the blue. Weather issues, the awnings at Southside. Of course, some of that insurance recovery, but we still have things that are ongoing that we fix, repair, paint, and take care of every day. But the report here reflects all the things that we spent money on over the past three years.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Ray concerning any of those public-private project update or school closing issue? Mr. Chairman? Yes, Carol.
Okay, you know, I'm having a minute here tapping in and all that stuff. But it'd be update on the construction contract for K eight. I didn't hear that, if he did explain that. Did he give a report on that?
Dale Thomas is going to cover that. I was going to cover that next, Ms. Carter.
Okay, it had his name by it, so that's why I was asking.
Okay, okay. Yeah, we're going to switch that up. So Dale's got some key points that he wanted to cover with legal-wise concerning that project. So he's going to come up next with that.
For Superintendent Washington. Mr. Chairman. I have a question for Superintendent Washington.
Okay, come on, Ray.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Have you given any consideration how you all would handle graduation contingent if school is not back in progress, process?
Yes, ma'am. We've talked about some virtual options. Of course, we would like to just push it back for traditional graduation. I had that in my notes too, to speak to you about on my comments. But so right now, we're just kind of postponing. But there are other virtual options that we've witnessed that could work. So we're exploring all those types of things for graduation. But right now, we just say it's in postponement. But if it gets postponed too long, we have some other options in mind. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
The principals, the high school principals and I went back and forth last week quite a bit about discussion graduation and of course, prom. But that's a lower priority, but that's still important to a lot of high schools, especially seniors. But right now, we're in the postponement mode.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Carol.
Okay, I have, Ed D., I didn't hear anything concerning the three-year capital accomplishments. Would the superintendent give an update on that, please?
He covered those. You didn't hear?
No, you know, I told you, I just got my little pad here acting up.
Okay.
He can give me the short version of it. I just didn't hear it.
Well, you've got a copy of it. He just covered the packet that each one of us have. You got the paperwork, Ms. Carter?
I'm sitting here looking at the agenda. I don't see that paperwork in here now, and I'm not going to say it's not in here. But did he cover that?
Okay, he'll cover it quickly again.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay, so what we, I'm sorry. Yeah, Ms. Carol, what I laid out was, and I'll give you a copy of this. We'll walk it across the hall in a few seconds.
Okay, thanks.
Every school over the past three years that we've done repairs to, and with that amount or two, and we're showing, we prioritize all work and then we prioritize the schools that need the most help. And we continue to update this process every, every three or four months. We get together and look at what we have to do and what's out there that needs to be worked on, along with new projects that come along, and we work those in and out. So I mentioned next year, we're going to do roof work at Nova, Liberty, Northside North, Alexander, which is going to get a new roof and HVAC, and we'll do roof work at Arlington also.
Okay.
Along with adding locker rooms to Jackson Career and Technology and West Bemis Middle Schools, who were originally built as elementary schools, but since then have been made to middle schools, and we did not have adequate locker rooms for physical education and athletics. So that's kind of the short version.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's okay.
Karen, I have one question.
Okay.
I have one question to Mr. Washington.
Sure, sure, Jim. Ray? You up, man?
Ray, listen, I'm sorry. Listen, I wanted to echo the chairman's appreciation for the work you and your team are doing on the meals program. I think that is a wonderful deal. Thank you. On the academic packets that you're getting out to the kids, can you talk about that a little more? Is that a, is that a one-time deal? Are we going to get them something every week? What, can you give us a little more detail on that?
Yeah, basically, that's going to be updated weekly. We got the K through eight on one platform, and then the high schools on a different platform. And those are packets are being distributed weekly. Also supplement to that, we have resources online that are used throughout the year. For instance, a popular online tool for high schools is Apex, that platform. Many students use that for credit recovery, some other things that go on. And already, the platform we're using for, for elementary, well, K through eight, you can access that online and through packets. So yes, weekly, we're doing packets, and there's online resources. Of course, PBS starting airing classwork today on the PBS stations that we put out that people can access. So there's several ways to access educational support during this crisis, and we continue to expand that. And we're making sure that we try to reach everybody by phone. Teachers have assignments. They work two hours a day, just trying to reach out to students and follow up with them. Of course, some teachers are going above and beyond. They're doing Zoom meetings and things of that nature. So we're just trying to make sure we give equitable, equitability to everyone, our special needs students. We try to make sure we get them the information they need based on their needs and just keep working the process every day.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any more questions for Superintendent Washington?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just had one statement I was going to add on to the question that Mr. Campbell had asked about students receiving work. I can tell you that I'm in daily contact with my girls' teachers. And my girls have done, in fact, I'm going to go pick up another packet tomorrow. They are doing work online. They are reading books and they are doing Zoom meetings with their teachers. Their teachers have checked on them weekly to make sure that they are, that they know about the feeding program, that they know where to go online. They're sending me all, I mean, I have learned that I'm not a homeschool parent very well. But I will say that my children's teachers, and I've spoken with other constituents who at first were a little anxious about it, but they have, I will say that we are seeing the cream of the crop rise to the top in our school system. And there are teachers and principals that are going above and beyond.
Well, thank you for that, and we thank them for all their participation. I try to get out to see as many schools as possible throughout the week. I have a morning meeting every morning at the Health Department, but after that, I just try to get out to as many schools as possible just to check on people and see what's going on.
Are there any plans, Mr. Superintendent, for more technology for the students' iPads, laptops, and all of that? Those that actually need it and can't get it?
Well, we have two challenges with that. Not just the access of the hardware, but having the Wi-Fi also. So we got to bridge both gaps in many ways. And even some students that do have access to hardware may not have access to Wi-Fi, or there could be multiple children in the house that they need multiple devices. So all our principals have been identifying those students who don't have those resources, and we're trying to figure out a way to bridge all those gaps. We could issue some of our laptops out, and we may end up doing that as this continues to prolong. And then there's going to be a bigger discussion if some of the stimulus money from the government does fall our way as to how we invest that. We might invest in more technology that we might be able to issue everyone a device at some point. But right now, we're working through the process to where we are, but we have in mind things that we can do different in the future.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Mr. Washington? I think Ray mentioned that TBS platform, which is going to be great for some of our students that don't have access to handheld electronics, TV sessions will actually protect programs and material that they can actually have access to. Thank you. Okay, Dale, you ready?
I am. You should have a construction contract. And the primary document.
Still.
I'm not able to hear attorney terms.
How about now?
Can you hear him now?
Yes.
All right.
All right.
You should have before you a construction contract. The primary document is the document that's, at the top, it says A one three three dash two zero one nine. That's the primary document. There's also some exhibits that you have to that document. There are three exhibits, and then there's a document called General Conditions that's incorporated by reference. I don't, what I want to do is go over the key provisions of these documents. The first thing I think is to look at the timing. That's in the primary contract at section one point, one point four. There are two primary phases. There is a pre-construction phase, and then There are two primary phases. Uh, there is a pre-construction phase, and then there is a construction phase. The construction manager uh. Will be working with the architect during the pre-construction stage to design and ultimately uh produce some uh bid documents. That can be used to bid out the project and get a uh what they call a guaranteed maximum price. Now. During the pre-construction phase, how this works is that the uh construction manager receives twenty percent of his total fee. For the pre-construction work, and the rest of the fee is reserved for the construction part. The way the fee is calculated, it's three-point-four-five percent of the uh contract value. Now, we don't know what the contract value is yet, and and so I wanna make sure that we're clear on that, because I think there was some misunderstanding uh on the uh. Contract value when we were doing the public-private partnership. We have estimated a budget of twenty to twenty-four million dollars. However, no one knows what the cost of this school is gonna be at this point. It's based on estimates and some uh good estimates, I would assume. But until you build, until you design the building and until you actually receive the construction bids back, there's really no way to get a better handle on what the ultimate cost is. So we're doing it for a budget uh phase at twenty to twenty-four million, and for budget purposes only, the constructed construction fee is being estimated on a twenty-million-dollar construction. So three-point-four-five percent of twenty million dollars is six-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. That includes that twenty percent that is for pre-construction. The pre-construction cost is gonna be roughly one-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand. But finally, the construction manager fee will be readjusted once we actually have a guaranteed maximum price. So we're doing this based on estimates at this point, but we don't really know until we get that guaranteed maximum price. The, after the construction documents are complete, within sixty days, the construction manager will prepare this guaranteed maximum price. And what that is, is that is a price where this building will not exceed. And that consists of the cost of work, the contingency, and the construction manager fee. Now, when you have a guaranteed maximum price, which he's gonna give us within sixty days after the bid documents are ready. Then we, the school system, will have forty-five days after we've received that guaranteed maximum price to either accept or decline that guaranteed maximum price. Once there's a guaranteed maximum price that's agreed to, then ultimately. The construction manager bears the risk of any excess over that guaranteed maximum price unless the owner approves change orders or changes the scope of work. And that would be the only way that the school system would owe more money for the construction of the school after the guaranteed maximum price is determined and accepted. Once we, once the school system accepts the guaranteed maximum price, construction is to begin within fifteen days. And then, once construction begins, substantial completion will be eight, within eighteen months after construction starts. So is there any questions about that, those particular issues at this point? And I've got a few more points after that, but that's the the timeline and uh how we arrive at a guaranteed maximum price. And also how the construction manager is paid. Right. If not, let me go through a few other little points. Uh, one is that the construction manager. Will have a payment and performance bond that covers one-hundred percent of whatever the contract price is. Also, the construction manager has to comply with all competitive bid requirements. And the construction manager has to provide monthly uh updates to the board during the construction phase. There's also a fifteen-hundred-dollar-per-day penalty for the construction manager's failure to meet the substantial completion date. And finally, there is a termination provision in the contract in the event that Madison County does not appropriate the funds for this construction. So those are pretty much the terms of the contract. Now, I've spoken to the chairman uh before the meeting, and I think it's my understanding that. Before the board actually votes on this construction contract and approves it, the chairman wants to send that to the budget committee for closer review and approval. So I know we had initially said we were gonna do that at the Thursday meeting, but I think now the thought is that it needs to go through the budget committee initially. So that's my report on the construction contract. If you have any questions, I'm I'm trying to answer.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Okay, Jim. Go ahead.
Dale, if I look at exhibit A. Well, look at exhibit A under A point, two-point-one. There's a date of commencement. And so of of this contract, and we have two choices. It would either be when we when we execute this. Or there would be some date in the future. I I'm assuming. I'm assuming that we're gonna pick a date when final funding is approved by the county before this this contract would uh would really be in effect. Is that right?
That before the guaranteed maximum price, yes. Now, the way we've drafted it is that we've we've said in the contract. That the commencement date will occur within fifteen days of our acceptance of the guaranteed maximum price.
Well, once we, let let's, I understand we're gonna, we're gonna, this is gonna go through the budget committee. But let's assume that the budget committee approves it, and then it would come back to this board in May for approval. And if we approved it, then at that point, would we execute this agreement?
We would execute the agreement, but we would not execute the guaranteed maximum price.
I understand that, but so at at what point would we would we give notice to proceed to the design team and to the construction manager here? To do the pre-construction work? Would that be upon approval of this, or would we would we be, would that be contingent on funding from the county?
Well, it's, I think that's part of the discussion that uh Mr. Johnson wants the budget committee to have, and it's my understanding that typically, of course, what you're thinking, what you're looking at here is for the pre-construction phase. The cost is gonna be roughly a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars for the uh construction manager. So I think part of the discussion about sending it to the budget committee is to make sure that we either have funds already uh available to pay that pre-construction piece. Or that we make funds in our upcoming budget available for that pre-construction piece.
But Dale, there would be, there would be a parallel cost with the architect. It would be ongoing in addition to this, wouldn't it?
That's correct.
So in total, if you run that, what's the pre-construction, the pre-construction number would be a lot more than a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars in total, wouldn't it?
Now, right, a hundred-and-eighty is only talking about the construction manager piece, and I do not remember what the architect fee was off the top of my head. I don't remember how that was calculated.
Okay, so so. Okay, all right. I I I guess, and and we don't have to decide it right now, but I guess the the question I've got is, let's just say that that's gonna be a substantial number. My my guess is that. You'd be talking about a seven-figure number if you turned the design team loose and and the uh the construction manager to work with them. And by the way, that's a smart thing to do. I'm glad I'm. That that's a, that's a smart way to approach this, to have those two working together. I guess I'm just uh trying to anticipate. Uh, i- if we said, hey, we re- really don't wanna spend that kind of money on our dime until we've got county uh approval, approval from a funding body. And I guess I'd like, well, we we can get into that, but. I I guess at the budget committee meeting, but.
Yep, Mr. Jim, this is Ray. This will be part of the session. I've been talking to the county uh and and, you know, so we're not gonna jump out of line with the funding body. We had a select construction manager. We just want to solidify the contract with him as we did with the architect firm, but we definitely go include the funding body in every conversation. Last conversation, ar- architect and construction manager, as we laid out, that it'd be some delays, and this thing may not run off um as anticipated. They were included in that meeting. Currently have a PO open for two-hundred thousand dollars for some of the geotech stuff that we're gonna get done uh with that PO, that money. So now, we're taking this one step at a time. We're not running off doing anything other than making sure of what we're doing, working with the funding body. You know, over a course of time, we'll get there, but we're not running off and committing to something that we know we can't pay for right now.
Okay, all right.
All right? And that's why we go go through the budget committee, so everybody understands what we're working towards, what we're committing to, and what we're not working.
Okay.
All right?
All right.
Even down to who cuts the grass, I'm looking at everything that's.
Yeah, Jim, that was um, if you can hear me, that was um um my concerns, a lot of questions I had, and I knew if I had questions um um about the contracts and the um construction piece. I know several others had questions also, so I wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity offline to cover all those uh questions and and make sure we uh we're on point and where the funding is coming from and and um more accurate on what dollars we're talking about.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Dale?
No, the question I had, Jim, uh went over it also. Uh, that's what I, that I was kinda confused with the pre-construction and the construction phase period.
Okay, okay. Uh. Yeah, I agree. I was uh, a few of some of those uh those documents also, uh that's why I thought it would um be in our best interest to actually do the discussion in a smaller setting. Uh, before we uh discuss it and actually uh voted on it. Okay, there's not any other questions uh for Dale? Uh, we have a capital reports up, Dr. Green?
Hello, can you all hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes. Um, I don't have any um additional report um other than what you all received in um. From Janet, and so if there's any questions about that, I um, any questions about what was, what you all received, I can answer those, or if you have any questions relative to anything else, I can answer that as well.
Dr. Green, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Before school was out and uh the extended period, uh how many uh vacancies did we have?
I believe the last time I reported, there were eighteen vacancies. I'll have to double-check and look, but I believe the last time I reported, there were eighteen vacancies.
Okay. Uh, next question, I know we we're getting approaching month of May, which is one of the the months every year if you tr- we track it, that we have uh. Teachers that retire or and teachers that actually uh leave. So have you had any uh uh teachers that have already uh decided a uh process, any paperwork on retiring?
Yeah, I have a stack um of teachers that have um um declared that they're gonna retire. I would say I have anywhere between uh ten and fifteen. Uh, what I'll do is I can have a more solidified number for you on Thursday. Um, we have um paperwork that we are processing uh right now. And um, so I don't wanna give, I don't wanna state a number, but I do believe I have between ten and twelve. Uh, but I'm sorry, between ten and fifteen right now. Um, I am getting emails. Um, I am getting emails as we have been out of folks who are declaring that they're gonna resign or retire. So I wanna. I wanna make sure that I have um, that I give you the correct number from the emails that I've received and the ones that I actually already have.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Well, and Mr. Johnson, I I do wanna say this, um, because as you mentioned, folks will start to declare that they are uh retiring or resigning uh between now and May. Um, we have, at the last board meeting, I talked to you all about um the possibility of getting a new online um um onboarding or or applicant tracking system. And we have actually um secured one, and today, uh an invitation went out actually to the principals and other um supervisors who are uh managers who make recommendations to the superintendent. Uh, for training that we are gonna have on next Monday. So within the next week or so, we are gonna transition and phase out the old applicant tracking system, and we'll phase in the new applicant tracking system. And I'll be working in conjunction with uh Ms. Scott and Ms. uh Lacy on getting communication out to the public on letting, to let them know that we have the new system. And so people will need to be, need to go in and log in and create their accounts in the new system. So that'll happen within the next couple of weeks, but I wanna make sure. That our principals and our supervisors are trained first on how to actually manipulate and navigate within the system uh before we do that. But we'll get um something out. Uh, a press release or um Facebook, Twitter, we'll let everybody know, the public know that we will have a new system. And so everyone that uh wants to apply for our open position will need to go to that new link. After we get the principals and supervisors trained, we will take the old link down. And we will um put the new link up. So that's where people will start to go to um actually apply for jobs for the twenty-twenty-one school year.
Okay, uh, one, one other question. I know that uh I've seen that some of the other school systems, uh, we know that teachers uh. Getting harder and harder to find because of the teacher shortage. Some school systems are, have started some virtual uh interviewing, use uh early. Uh, I guess to get ahead of the game before everybody starts at the May, May-June uh timeframe. Have you um, you guys looked at anything like that or that that process?
Yes, sir. Um, also, along with the new applicant tracking system that we have, the company um is going to actually offer us a ninety-day free trial. Um, for uh virtual um interviewing. And so with that, we hope to have also um a possible virtual applicant um or interview fair. So we're working uh with the um, with the company that is doing our, that is hosting our applicants, our applicants and our and our applicant tracking system. In order to uh train principals on that platform as well. So we will have um an announcement. Uh, and again, I'll work with uh Ms. Scott and Ms. Lacy on hosting that as well. That we will have the capabilities of having, um, we'll have the capabilities. that we will have the capabilities of having, um, we'll have the capabilities of having virtual interviews for our principals to, um, hold as well.
Great, okay, alright, thank you.
Yes, Dr. Green?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, two things. The first one is, um, are we still doing exit interviews? As those who retire or as those who decided to leave are getting feedback? Um, if so, if we could get an update on those, um, sent to the board members, you know, I would appreciate that. Just wanted to see if they have given any comment, um, as to why they are leaving at this point in time. I know each year, this is a big influx of people retiring or deciding to leave, but I know that we had in place exit interviews and I was wondering whether or not we're still using those exit interviews to determine, you know, uh, basically this is going to go into the next question that I have for you, and this is concerning the teachers retention committee. You know, you all are doing a good job concerning that. Uh, but we had used that policy supposedly as a model policy for one year, which time we were going to send it back to T S B A to become an actual policy. And, uh, just wanted to know the update concerning that as well.
Okay, so yes, ma'am, we are still doing, um, exit interviews. And what happens with that process is whenever I get, uh, notice of separation, um, on the notice of separations, we have a place to where each employee can write their personal email address on it. And so whenever I start to process the, the, uh, notices of separation, I send an email to the personal email address and so that employees can, um, submit, uh, a notice of, can submit that, um, survey, exit survey, and it, um, it's anon, it is anonymous. So when I send it out, I don't know if I'm going to get the, um, I don't know if I'm going to get a response back because they don't have to complete it. I can't require them to complete it. I can strongly encourage them and we do send them and we encourage them to complete it to, to, and be answered truthfully. Um, there is some information on there that we asked for, where they work, what their position was, how long they've worked. So we're trying to look at if we're losing veteran teachers or if we're losing teachers that have worked for just a few years, first year, three years, five years. We're looking at all of that. And so I do have, um, some of that information and I can get with Mr. Washington and see how he would like to, uh, how he would like for me to disseminate that information, um, uh, to him and then I guess he can get, get that information, uh, to you all as of where we stand right now. Or if you would like to, if you want to wait until we get more, uh, resignations in. I, um, right now, we don't have a lot of responses. We do have some, and I don't mind sharing, uh, the information that we do have right now. But I believe that as the year goes on, uh, we have seen that we do have more people start to resign, um, in the month of May and it may, and we may have more, um, robust data to share if we wait, um, a little bit longer. But I'm, I'm, I do have the information that we have right now and I don't mind sharing that, uh, Ms., with Mr. Washington for him to give that to you all if, uh, that is what you all desire. Uh, and as far as the teacher retention committee is concerned, uh, we talked last month, um, about the two focuses that we wanted, uh, that the teacher retention committee, uh, recommended that we focus on, which was, uh, the, the discipline, uh, within the schools and then, um, the ways in which we are implementing, uh, the curriculum and, um, and the feedback that teachers are getting from, uh, how they're implementing the curriculum. So those are the two bu, major buckets that the teachers wanted to focus on. Uh, we have not met since that last meeting, obviously because of the, uh, closure of schools and teachers are really, uh, busy with connecting with their students and making sure that their students know that they're there and that they are concerned about them and they're checking and working with homework assignments. So we have not scheduled any other type of, of meeting and I don't know what the superintendent would like for us to do regarding that, but I can get with Mr. Washington to see what he would like for us to do moving forward, um, and, and possibly do a, a virtual meeting with the, with the teachers and the committee or have them to email me some, uh, further suggestions. But, but I believe those two buckets, uh, those things that they put in those, um, two major buckets were enough for us to begin to start to try to look at and work on beginning, um, you know, with this, ending this school year and beginning the next school year.
Okay, thank you. And yes, in the month of May, after May, or at the beginning of the next school year, you can, uh, just present us with that data.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, Doris has a question.
Um, my question was answered, thank you. Uh, I was trying to follow protocol and say wave my hand or whatever, but, uh.
You're doing good, Doris.
Cause I know I blurred out, but my question was answered and also I have to, uh, concur. Uh, I think that we need to wait a little longer before we get that information. That, in that way, we can, uh, just see exactly kind of what the calls and, and the patterns of why people are separating. So, um, just, uh, a little longer, maybe, uh, June.
Yes, ma'am, and, and our teachers have been, uh, over the last few years, I do want to say this as well, our teachers have started to declare, um, earlier than they ever have before within the last two years that they're going to retire or resign because, um, we have let them know that if they finish their contract, they will have their, uh, benefits through, uh, uh, extend, extended to them throughout the summer. And so that had been, um, an issue before, uh, when teachers were declaring that they were going to retire a few years ago, um, the, the finance office were, uh, they, when, if they declared they were going to retire in, say in, on May the 20, on May the 22nd, that's the last day of this month, then the finance office used to cut them off right then. So they wouldn't have, um, they would have insurance through the month of June, but they wouldn't have insurance through the month of July. And so now what we have done is, is if you work your contract, we continue to, we don't pay them out. We continue to extend their, their pay through those actual 26 pay periods. So that means they have, they're, they're, they have completed their, uh, payments for their insurance and so they have insurance through June and July. And so that's what a lot of teachers have been, were concerned about. They didn't, they didn't want to declare that they were retiring or resigning in, in May and then not have insurance for the month of July. And so we have, um, with the way that we are doing it now, it, it's not costing us any more money. It's not doing anything with the budget. It's actually, it's all, it's all the same, um, because our insurance payments are, you make those payments within 24, uh, installments, but we get paid in 26 installments. So our teachers are now feeling more comfortable with declaring that they're going to retire or resign earlier because they know that they will have insurance through the month of June and July. And so therefore they, um, therefore they are, uh, more likely to let us know that they're leaving us as far as retirement or if they're going to another district or if they are leaving, um, education altogether. So that has been very helpful, um, to us as well.
Okay, any other questions for Dr. Green? Thank you, Dr. Green.
Yes, sir.
Uh, next on the agenda, the volunteer recognition award. Uh, we all know that, um, annually, our principals select a volunteer and we actually vote, um, and I, well, voted at our board meeting, um, for the volunteer of the year. And you should have all the applications in your packet. If you don't, make sure you get with Tins and she can get you a copy of those if you, if you don't have that. Uh, along those same lines, uh, student recognition awards, each principal, uh, high school, nominates a junior for the, uh, uh, this award and actually T S B A will actually send out the information to assist them with the, uh, application process. Any questions about either one of those, the volunteer recognition award or the student recognition award? Again, we'll vote on those, uh, at our board meeting on the night. Uh, next, uh, Superintendent Washington was discussing our summer school location, tuition and fees. I think there's a little, we probably gonna, they'll probably be on hold.
Yes, this is the time of year where we would be identifying all those things based on, um, factors. And so, uh, as we evolve in the next.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, this is the time of year where we'd be identifying those locations and, um, getting the busing and everything straightened out so that we can make sure we get them to and from. Uh, that's, uh, on hold for a little while, uh, at least, and we'll update you via email as those things change. But right now, uh, we don't have that in place. And so once we do get it in place, if it's between meetings, I'll be sure to update you of the locations and, um, all the details regarding that.
Superintendent Washington?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have a question concerning the before and after care programs. I was just noticing that the fee per week for each child or additional child is totally different. Uh, is this based on income of parents to determine how much they pay? Or is it just left up to each school to determine how much, um, each individual would pay for the before and after care program? Say for instance, um, it says here the before and after programs for elementary schools, $25 per week for a child and additional child at the cost of $20 per week, two hours a day. Did it, below that, it states that Northeast Middle School before and after program, $40 per week for a child and an additional child at the cost of 45, three hours a day.
Uh, I know that, there's a price difference in the NOVA because the requirements are different for, uh, pre-K students than they are for regular education students, uh, the, the younger students. Uh, Northeast Middle School, I don't think any middle schools offer after care. Um, so I, that may be something that's incorrect, uh, right there. NOVA would be the only one that's different from the others.
Okay, this is part of the packet that we received. And it states that information.
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes, Dr. Green.
This is Dr. Williams. Northeast Middle School offers the after-school program in particular for those students that are in the academic academy, a lot of them. And because it is three hours and the elementary programs are two hours, that's why the middle school program is higher. The students stay because they get out of school at 2:15, so it's 2:15 to 5:30.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions regarding that? Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Williams.
No other questions concerning the, uh, after, uh, care program. Uh, next on the agenda, an update on, uh, this superintendent search. Uh, as you know, that, uh, we have the, uh, the Corona epidemic, we didn't have a full, um, uh, schedule of, of board members for various reasons, but I made sure that, um, our new board member had an opportunity to go visit and actually meet firsthand all three candidates, uh, with questions. Um, and they also had presentations to make, uh, for her also. Following our, um, um, timeline, and I think everybody has a copy of the timeline, uh, we are scheduled, uh, on our Thursday board meeting to offer, execute contract or vote on that selection. So with that, um, if there's any, um, questions about the process, the selection, uh, we know that we have three, uh, excellent candidates. Uh, actually, we had, uh, several, uh, good candidates that actually submitted applications during this process, which started back in, uh, November. So with that, I, I'll, uh, give to any, uh, you know, board member that'd like to make any comments, uh, questions or, um, at this time.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Jim, go ahead.
I would like to have a discussion about delaying this process, this decision, really until next year. Uh, and Mr. Chairman did not, I, I think we had a good plan in place, uh, as far as the process, but things unraveled very, very quickly in March and they're continuing to unravel right now. And I, I, I guess for at least a couple of reasons, I would really like to see this board discuss and consider delaying this process. Uh, and, and, and you're right, we all had the opportunity to go make another visit, but for several reasons, at least, and I speak for myself, but for several reasons, I could not make that. Uh, but at the end of the day, we've got six board members that have really only had two one-hour meetings with these candidates where we got to ask two questions each. Uh, and, and again, I'll speak for myself, I, I don't feel like I'm ready to make a decision on, on one of them. Uh, and, and this meeting format itself is working better than I thought it would, but really, to me, it doesn't lend itself to the type of deliberative process that we really need to be going through to make a decision like this. But, but the other thing I would say is, and this is the most important thing, uh, and Mr. Chairman, you alluded to it at the beginning of the meeting, we're in a period of an unprecedented, unprecedented crisis. And with all the uncertainty and the state of flux we're in right now, I just think it's unwise to add to our challenges and add to our problems by bringing in a new superintendent. Uh, handing off the leadership of an organization like this is hard enough when things are running smoothly. Uh, it's tricky enough to do that when things are, when things are running well. But to do it now in the midst of all of this, I think just needlessly adds, adds to our challenges and it adds, it adds a new level of confusion that we really, we really don't need right now. And, and I say needlessly, because at least I, I think Mr. Washington has done a, a great job. I don't, I don't feel any pressure to make a change and I see a lot of downside risk to pushing the change at this time. But with that, I'd like to hear, I'd just like to hear thoughts from the rest of the board on this.
Miss, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. I, I know, it seemed like, can you hear me? This is Carol. Yes.
Carol.
Okay, thank you so very much. I am in favor of moving forward. Uh, I feel that had this been important enough a few months ago before we got to this point, uh, that, that should have been e- explained and expressed at that particular time. We're in a situation where we're going to have to have someone, uh, a, a director over, over education in this system whereby we can move forward. We, we have so much going on as it relates to student, uh, retention. Uh, we, we have young folk that, uh, need to be educated and need to move on forward so that we can go, so that they can go on with their lives and be contributors to our community here. Uh, I, I don't see the, the, where postponing this would really do any good. Uh, like I said, I, I think this has been going on before I came in as interim here, uh, in this position. And so I don't understand why it was not got, why hasn't gotten to this point and then all of a sudden we want to, uh, back up and delay it. Nothing against Mr. Washington, I want to be on record as saying that. But by the same token, we need to go ahead and move forward. Uh, we, we spent time and, and I guess. Uh, we, we spent time and, and I guess some money doing what we have done thus far, getting to where we are in selecting a director of schools. So I'll go on record saying I vehemently, uh, opposed to delaying this. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. If, if I could, just in, in one word, uh, just one quick word. Even thirty days ago, our, our governor thought that this, uh, virus was gonna be a non-event. This thing is, this thing is unraveled very, very quickly. Uh, and thirty days ago, I thought it was gonna be a non-event. But this thing has, has, has come on us with unprecedented speed. And so I, I, I understand why this is only coming up right now in terms of point of discussion.
Oh, is that, is that a, you asking for a response to that, Jim, or what? I, I, and I really didn't understand actually what you were saying.
I, I heard, I'm sorry, but Mr. Chairman, I heard that there was a concern expressed that why didn't we talk about delaying this sixty days ago or even thirty days ago? And I'm just saying in response to that, even thirty days ago, I did not, I underestimated the impact, uh, of, of this virus on our system and on our state. And I'm not the only one that underestimated it. That, that's why, that's why at least I wasn't discussing it thirty days ago.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can I quickly, I think Miss Black
Yes, Carol, go ahead.
Here, um, the life goes on, okay, i- i- no matter what, uh, virus or, or, or not virus. Uh, and so therefore I don't see the, the, any value whatsoever, added value, in putting off the selection, moving forward and going on, get someone in here. Because actually, I've not even heard Mr. Washington express, not to me, that, that he's even interested in going forward. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Go, go ahead, go ahead, Doris.
Um, we have, eh, in my opinion, three excellent candidates. Now, we delay this, we stand a chance of losing, um, some, one of the candidates or all of the candidates. And I feel that any of them basically could go forward. Um, Jim, uh, I know you said that we only had a couple, uh, hours with them, but, uh, we had other materials to study and we had the opportunity to do our own research, which I did because I too did not go and visit the sites. So I felt that it was up on me to actually do more research. And, uh, in this stage of the game, why wouldn't we delay it and start all over again, number one? And number two, more so than ever, we need someone to step in because you are so right. We are in unprecedented times and we need someone to just forge ahead, get in while school is not in session, get themselves together, get to know the community and do all of the things that they promised us that they would do. And, uh, move ahead with this process.
AJ? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Um,
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, uh, I'm also in favor of delaying the process. I think it's to note that, uh, Jim Campbell has, has brought this up and, uh, he's not seeking reelection to this office. So he's actually asking to not have a say in this decision, um, for whatever reason. But he's willing to leave it up to a future board to make this decision because it's the right thing to do. Um, and I would like to, in the most respectful way that I can muster up, please beg of my other board members to stop saying that they appreciate Ray Washington and he's the most wonderful superintendent ever. And then in the same breath, say that we need good leadership and we need a change. Um, I believe Ray is doing more than an acceptable job. I think he's doing an excellent job. His lack of an educational background in this environment is actually an advantage to me. Uh, someone with an educational background is not necessarily, uh, equipped to deal with a, the running of a two thousand employee and twelve thousand or thirteen thousand student organization like Ray has with his military background, his organizational background and his finance background in that case as well. Uh, Ray is a very black and white guy, yes, no guy. And we don't need creativity right now. We don't need new ideas right now. We definitely do not need new directions right now. And I can echo from every single teacher, principal, superintendent that I've spoken to, not superintendent, but principal that I've spoken to. The last thing they need is new direction at this moment in time. We are too uncertain about what tomorrow brings to bring in a new idea and a new direction right now. If you believe that we have three excellent candidates, that's fine. And those candidates will be there in the future because guess what? Nobody else is hiring right now either. Nashville has suspended their search. Other systems have sus- suspended their search. Good grief, we can't go to the grocery store, but in a percentage that we couldn't, that we could a few weeks ago. So the entire economy and the, the country has essentially gone to a standstill. And the nine of us believe that we're above that and can move forward. And the last comment I'll make is, the one thing that I heard more than any other of dissenting opinions of Dr. Jones is that when Dr. Jones was hired, the process was not transparent. I heard that and I didn't believe that, nor do I agree with that today. But I heard that the process was not transparent. People knew who they wanted before they started. People tried to get Dr. Jones railroaded in. And here's the reality, this, I'm, I'm on, I'm, I'm on Facebook Live on my phone because I had people texting me, couldn't see this meeting. Apparently, E plus wasn't working or something was going on. So we are at the most non-transparent that I, we've been in in the two years that most of us have been board members. And definitely since probably the rest of the, as the board members have been here, we're at the least transparent we've ever been. And we're gonna try to push this through without any kind of opinion. We haven't even had public comment tonight. That our constituents, members of the community have not been able to give us their opinion on what they want today in a public forum. And so we're, we're doing a disservice to do this. And once again, please stop saying we need new leadership and, oh, Dr. uh, Ray's great, Ray's great, Ray's great. Stop saying that because you obviously don't believe it. I believe Ray's doing an, an excellent job in this environment. And I think going forward with him, we are not missing a beat. And I think starting with a new board in this environment is gonna be really difficult for whatever superintendent we bring in if we bring in one Thursday. They're walking in with potentially five new board members to deal with in a period of two months. And they're not even in school. They can't even meet with their staff and their faculty. It just doesn't make any sense to do this right now. And I think doing it shows that, once again, this board has no concern with what the community thinks about what we do and has no, has no concern with the opinion of our constituents. I've heard nothing but people telling me, wait and wait and wait, just wait, we'll get the right man or woman down the road, just wait. And not doing that is, once again, a slap in the face to our constituents, in my opinion.
Shannon? Can you hear me, Shannon?
Okay, yes, I have a few things to say as everyone is surprised at. Um, I've received, um, one email and one phone call in regards to this issue. Um, and you guys know I say this all the time. I am very accessible. Guess what? I haven't been doing anything for the last two weeks because I've been at home with my children. One phone call from a school teacher and, um, one phone call from a, one email from a parent. And I did have a follow-up conversation with him about that. Um, and those two people asked me to delay the superintendent search, but they did not give me any reason other than they just felt like it was a bad political move. Which AJ, I don't mean any disrespect towards you, but are you sure you're not up for reelection? Because that's exactly what it sounded like coming from you right now. Um, I felt like I was at a political rally for you almost. Um, and at the risk of making myself look politically bad, I decided over the weekend before the trips to Fayette and Shelby County, um, and, um, to, uh, Murray County to visit the three candidates not to go. I consulted with my doctor. I do have an underlying health issue, diabetes, that does make me considered a risk for COVID nineteen. Um, I also have children who live in my home that I have to care for on a regular basis. So I had to take that into consideration. And so my husband and I made the decision that I was not gonna make the trip. So on Monday morning, I emailed those three gentlemen and said, can I please have a phone conversation with you? Because I have some more questions. I'm sorry, I can't come. Um, two of those gentlemen actually took the time to speak with me. One of them scheduled a phone call with me and then decided that he felt like it was not a good move to have a conversation with me. So of course, that happened right after I started hearing some rumblings in the community about us delaying or asking us to delay, um, our vote on superintendent. Um, and I will say this also, that, um, when Jim Campbell speaks while I'm sitting in the boardroom and while we're doing this right here, I listen. And so, Mr. Campbell, you actually brought up some points that I had personally not thought about in regards to this issue. Um, but I guess my concern is that, um, you know, yes, we are in an unprecedented crisis, but, um, I just feel like, again, this is our board saying we're going to do something. We voted on a timeline and we have, y'all, we, we've done great on that timeline. We have followed it to the T. But here we are when it's time to actually make a decision. And we have people saying, oh, let's not make a decision. And so I'm saying, I walked into this meeting expecting to have this conversation because it's been a topic of discussion. Um, thankfully, I don't listen to talk radio. Um, but, um, I will say to Mr. Campbell, you did bring up some very good points. And when you speak, Mr. Campbell, I listen. I respect you as a member of this board. I respect you as a member of this community. Um, and you said yourself, thirty days ago, excuse me, we were sitting in the boardroom. We had no idea it was gonna look like this. Thirty days ago, we were talking about going on spring break. But also, I feel like that there's also been some pressure put on some people. And I almost probably sound like Morris Meyerweather when I say this. There's been some pressure put on some people who sit on this board from people in the community to have a certain stance about this. And so I don't believe that I'm not being transparent. I, I do believe that, um, we do stand a chance of losing these candidates. Yes, Nashville did suspend their candidate search, but as far as I know, all the other counties who are look, still looking for a superintendent are still looking for a superintendent. Um, but again, I'm gonna say this. I said this last month. I said this the month before. And I feel like I have proven this over and over again. I am a team player. And so I'm glad we're having this conversation. I hate that we're not gonna get to sit next to each other to have this conversation because I think, uh, there's a lot of feeling about it. There's a lot of emotion about it. But I do feel like if I had to make a decision today, I can make a decision about who our next superintendent should be. That's all I have to say.
May I, may I speak? Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Doris, go ahead.
Um, I, um, I have to, Shannon, you and I have not talked, but I have to agree with you on some things because I don't know what sector, AJ, of the community that you have listened to because I have had people to call me also and are ready for us to move forward. And these are people from the community, the, uh, uh, teachers and administrators. They are all ready to move forward. And, uh, to Shannon's point, we came, at least I did, came to this meeting ready for Thursday that we were gonna vote on the candidate. As a matter of fact, I revisited my material this morning because I thought we would have a robust conversation as, I know we can't, that we aren't gonna vote tonight, but kinda so we can all be on the same page. And I would love for that to happen. I hate to see us being split at every angle when we said that this is something we were gonna do. And I would hate for the community to say, once again, they are not doing that. Let's just move forward. I don't understand why we can't.
Okay, Kevin, Janice, if you guys want to jam in?
Yes. Uh, Kevin needs to talk, he can go ahead on.
Go ahead, Janice.
Okay. All right, just wanted to make this comment. Uh, uh, basically, you know, as we were approaching this time, at first I too had stated, do we need to stop at one point because of what was going on with this particular virus? But it seemed like we got things consistently up on track and, um, all the candidates were able to make the interviews and we did the receptions and everything too, okay? A- and so as we were moving forward, you know, I was reluctant to even travel to the different sites to where these candidates, um, were. But I felt like I needed more information, you know, upon them. So I took it hard, Shannon, you know, I didn't supposed to go to as well. But I did because it was very difficult for me to make a determination about who I felt, you know, would be the next, uh, candidate, you know, for us, for superintendent. And so as I went to the different sites, you know, it seemed even harder because I have to agree, we, TSBA had given us a good slate of candidates, uh, to which I feel like that we can move forward with, you know, at this point in time. Now, are there community people? Sure. Some have come to me to say, why don't you wait? You know, but education doesn't wait and it cannot wait, you know, to the point that each child will be youth, uh, losing, you know, momentum when it comes to getting the right, um, curriculum, you know, focusing upon what needs to be focused upon, helping the teachers. And so our whole nation is in a crisis, even as it relates to education. But we have to ask ourselves, you know, this particular question, you know, what would it profit if we didn't move forward? What would it profit if we didn't move forward, you know? And all I could say is that it's no profitant either. It's just, it would be a hindrance to, uh, not to make a decision upon the, you know, uh, the children, you know, for the children as we focus to move on. And so I think that we are at the right time now, in the right place, to continue to move forward. You know, you know, I really truthfully hate that this pandemic has put a hindrance on, um, people not being able to get more information, you know, uh, in order to make an informed decision about which candidate, you know, um, to work with as far as our next superintendent. But as you know, everything is ruled by vote. And so it seems like to me that, uh, we're kinda split in some way or the other. And so when it comes to situations such as this, you know, I think that the, uh, body, the board just needs to make a consensus in a vote whether to move forward, either, you know, whether to halt. But, uh, you know, me personally, I think that we need to take this time and just to continue to move forward, you know? That's me, okay? And then another side of me saying, well, could we wait a little while? You know, maybe so. But, you know, I have to do what the people in my district has asked for us to do and the majority of them have asked for us to move forward.
Thank you, Janet. Kevin?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Just a couple of things. First of all, uh, I think this has been a wonderful discussion. And I appreciate the opportunity to get to, you know, air my, my thoughts on this. I would like to say, I've received no calls from anybody, no emails from anybody. I'm just speaking from, in eight years on the board, this is, and, and it speaks for Janice too, this is our fourth search. And I'm just, I'm speaking also from a knowledge of how difficult it is to make these transitions in the best of times. But, uh, I, you know, and I'm listening to all the conversations, but Mr. Chairman, I'll have to say at this time, I'm not ready to move forward with a vote.
Okay. Kevin? Kevin, you on? You have it muted.
Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
I hear you now.
I, I didn't unmute myself. I, I do agree, we are
I, I do agree, we are in very challenging times. And up until a couple of weeks ago, we only had eight board members, which I'm pretty sure I brought up in the March meeting as we talked about going forward with this. And I thought, you know, we only got eight board members. It would be hard to move forward with just eight board members. But now, we went through it and I am for moving forward. And I think it is the best thing we can do with, as far as we've gotten. If we was going to suspend it, we should have suspended it when we had eight board, eight board members, and I'm for moving forward.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Everyone, let me, my input, we'll move, move on. And I really appreciate this conversation on the board members. And I really, really appreciate all of your opinions. And that's what it's all about, I think, respecting each other, respecting each other's opinion. And show some solidarity at some point on this board. And we've done it on several occasions, several ways. Let me cut the chase and give you my opinion. My opinion is, and I'll tell you around the bed, is to move forward. Let me tell you why. We talked about the coronavirus issue, which is, in my, my mind, issue that we don't even know what's going to happen the next week, next month. And there's just a lot of time going to be tied up with a lot of different things. Right now, we're behind budgeting because of coronavirus. It's taking up so much time of planning, feeding principals, teachers. Some teachers wanting to volunteer, some teachers don't want to, a lot of legal issues. It's been, because of all the uncertainty, it's never happened before. It's been chaotic, but then we've been working through it. As a team, that's what we do. One of the other reasons, and there's several reasons, I think we need to move forward. There's a lot of things happening. We don't know when we're going to close schools, if we're going to have school the rest of the year. There's a lot of planning we've got to do. Finalizing senior work, graduations, closing out schools, even if a school do open, we're going to close pretty soon. We got to start thinking about reopening schools in the same breath. We're in the process of building two new schools, Madison, JCM. We're planning a K-8 all at the same time. We have an operational, critical budget process that we've got to get involved in. We haven't had meetings because of this circumstances. But we've got to get virtual meetings going, we've got to get into the budget process, and this is critical. We have to plan staffing sooner than later for JCM, zoning, which is time-consuming, curriculum, programs, all those things. We've got to plan the workforce development project, another project. In addition to that, we've got issues, behavior issues that we haven't actually touched on this year. It's operation critical that we actually get some more safety, security, things in place for Liberty, Parkway, and some of our other schools. We've got to figure out a way to retain teachers. And teachers are waiting, if we do nothing, in my opinion, and everybody's got their own opinion, we're going to lose lots and lots of teachers. We're going to lose a lot of teachers in the way. For the last three years, we've lost almost 400 teachers, 500 teachers. And everybody talk about percentages, that it's only 10 or 15%. That would, that would be an issue if we were at the top of, the top 10% in the state. We're at the lower 10%. We've got four priority schools, we've got five focus schools, nine schools, that's almost 50% of our schools, children that's learning and success is at stake. And I don't think that, I think we need all the help that we can get. And I think we've put off a lot of, putting, actually POAs, a plan of action in place to assist these schools properly. We've put off critical issues with Liberty. Do you know that in the last four years, four, five years, we lost 300 students at Liberty? We had 11, 1200 students. Now we're down to 800 or something. And with that, there's, the school is almost 80, 90% African-American. We've got issues and I don't know why everybody thinks everything's running smoothly. Everything's not running smoothly. That's just my opinion. My opinion, and that's some of the, some of the things that we've got going on that we need help with. We need movement on fronts, not only the building part, but we've got to stop putting off our kids' learning and move the needle on our, our kids' grades. 33% of our kids not reading at grade level. And we don't even talk about that. The reason why I actually ran to be a board member is to look at those things, the success of our kids. And we've got a lot of things that we haven't even touched on that we need to be touching on, dealing with the success of our kids. Again, my opinion is we should move forward. And I'm sorry for that long dialogue, but it's important because I think Jim and everyone brought up some good points. And I think it, the bottom line is, I think it would be a slap in the face to our kids and our teachers that we did nothing. That's my opinion. I think everybody had their round, gave their opinions, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate this discussion. So let's move, next agenda item, special course codes for Madison. And I think Catherine, is she on, Ray?
I can go through it if need be. What these are, a couple of courses at Madison that are offered that have to be approved by the state annually. So if you teach something that's not a course that's approved by the state, you send this application in each year. And the two courses are Speech and Communications 2 and Advanced Speech and Communications 3. And these are students who are in the debate and forensic programs there at Madison. And these classes have been taught at Madison in the past. But periodically, the application for special courses has to be re-submitted to the state. So this is not anything new. These courses are being taken by students currently, but this year, we need to resubmit the application. Yeah, just resubmit the application, that's all, right.
Okay, again, we'll vote on the application Thursday night, okay? Thank you, Mr. Washington. Next on the agenda, any suggestions for may board items, submitting those to Janice, myself, or Mr. Washington? One announcement I want to make, that the Education Vision Committee meeting has been canceled. And lastly, I want to thank our IT department for working this first election meeting that we've had. And I think that there's other entities that's watching, so they have to get theirs right. I want to thank JEA and again, West Tennessee for assisting us so that we get the publics involved. With that, Mr. Washington, you have any?
Yeah, not to end on a, not to end on a somber note, but I got notified today of two situations involving two members of our staff. Mr. Don Hodges, the longtime bus driver, passed away over the weekend. And I didn't find out till midday today. So I wanted to at least send condolences to his family formally through this venue and let board members know of that. And then I also found out we had a cafeteria manager who lost her sister to COVID-19 who lived in Texas. So those are two things that have been on my mind throughout the day today. I remember meeting Mr. Hodges out at Northside. He ran one of those routes in the afternoon when I would go out and see bus drivers at those different locations. So, and Ms. Mitchell, I've talked to her several times over at North Parkway, especially during this time with the feeding site. So that's just two things that have been on my mind throughout the day. And lastly, you know, so far to date, we have served 25,828 meals to our students. And we continue to add locations. We added a bus stop location in Alexander last week. This week, we're adding one in the Washington Douglas area. And then next week, we'll be adding one in the Beach Bluff area where we take buses out and set up, set up shop in those neighborhoods to get closer and closer to our students.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Washington? Again, the food delivery and weekly adjustments and updates has been phenomenal. This administration, Dr. Washington has done an excellent job. And I think especially with, there's been a, you know, criticism and everybody. At one point, people was calling and they was thinking that we were supposed to be feeding all 13,700 kids, no, 12,000, 1100 kids. And I told them, that's not the point. So we've been mapping it out, you know, been adding routes, adding buses and additional stops. And that's putting our kids first, I appreciate that. Anything else before we adjourn? Again, thanks to our IT department, JEA, and West Tennessee for assisting us. And our Board Secretary, Janice, who are actually coordinating a lot, lots of this process for us. Thank you, we adjourn.